Good evening, ladies. A very good evening to you. Mr. Rogers, the floor is yours. You're free to start. Good evening, folks.
Good evening, Mr. Rogers. Please unmute your mic. On Zoom, Julian, on Zoom.
Just confirm that you're hearing me now.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much. Apologies for that, but I'm not sure what happened at that end. But let me begin by welcoming everybody and welcoming you particularly to this global diaspora event hosted by the Barbados Overseas Missions in North America, Europe and Africa, and coordinated by our Washington Mission in DC. Barbados Prime Minister Mia Amor Motley and our Cabinet colleagues will be feeling questions from the diaspora community. On the cusp of our declaration of the transition to republican status, the diaspora community around the world are given a special opportunity to chat with the Prime Minister virtually from Bridge Town. This conversation is in no way limited only to the matter of the pending change in our national status, but importantly, we're open to a broad range of questions regarding the future of Barbados and the role of the diaspora in its development. It is fitting, therefore, that we first welcome the Honorable Sandra Husbands, Minister in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade and Minister with responsibility for diaspora affairs. Welcome, Minister. Please extend a welcome to our global community. Unfortunately, we are not hearing Minister Husbands. Are you muted?
I think I'm open now, yes.
You are open now. Go ahead, Minister.
Okay, thank you very much. Just wanted to thank you, Julian, for having me here at the very special Global Independence Event for Barbados. We want to give a very warm welcome to all of our diaspora wherever you are across the world. Indeed, this is a wonderful event for us to come together on the eve of independence, on the eve of being a republic, that we can speak together about the things that matter to us as Barbados. I want to especially give a warm welcome to the diplomats of the Barbados missions, their staff, and to the media who would be present. Our diaspora represents our wealth, not just in terms of assets that you may own, but really your skills, your ideas, your resources, your connections. All of these are important to Barbados. You carry in your bosom a love for Barbados that is found mainly in the hearts of people who are born here, but you carried it with you when you moved to other lands and you birthed the love of Barbados, the bosom of your offspring. We are very fortunate to have you. Not only do you represent wealth, you represent the spread of Barbados, for indeed Barbados geographically is 166 square miles, but we actually are bigger than that because Barbados is where every Barbadian is, wherever they are in any part of the world. And how you operate, how you live up to the motto of representing your country, place the flag of Barbados in the world of nations. And so we want to thank you because over the years, you've come as pro. We've seen Barbadians mount the stage to present to the world the best of what we have to offer in terms of intellect, ability, commitment, determination, industry, and pride. As a Barbadian, I'm always pleased to hear people speak well of you and what you've done in your adopted homeland and what you've done for Barbados. We recently welcomed nurses who came back responding to the crisis which we were facing in our healthcare system as we were seeking to respond to COVID. After serving their adopted land, packed suitcases and came and said, "We are reporting for duty. We've heard that Barbados needs us." They came, they were here, and we know you carry this in your heart. Each one of you is a precious piece of puzzle that makes up Barbados. And mobilizing each of you, the service of Barbados, is what is going to make us stronger. As the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, we seek to establish contact with you. Our job is to collaborate with you. But more importantly, one of the things that we have pledged to do is to be able to set up a system, the processes by which you will be able to engage Barbados, be able to work with our nine ministries and establish focal points so that as you engage us, whether it's with an idea, whether it's an investment opportunity, whether it is a gift back, that you have someone who is able to work with you and guide you so that you are able to deliver what you want to deliver to Barbados because we've set a system in place. And this is something that the Ministry of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade, under the leadership of the Honorable Dr. Jerome Walcott, this is what is going to be put in place to enable us to engage you better. Diaspora represents a tremendous opportunity. And as a nation, under the leadership of the Honorable Mia Amor Motley, she has pledged as part of our manifesto, "We are going to build out a diasporic economy which will allow you to engage Barbados in a meaningful way." And it is through that diasporic economic engagement that we are going to be able to convert the value of all that is Barbados into advancement for all of our people. As part of the steps that we will be taking towards that, we have crafted an immigration bill. And when it is ready for Parliament, ready for passing, we are looking forward to the fact that it's going to open the doors to allow the second and third generations of Barbadian to be able to claim their Barbadian heritage and claim their Barbadian citizenship. So there is a great deal to look forward to as we stand on the cusp of becoming a republic. We are looking forward to the implementation of many ideas that Prime Minister Motley has in store as we seek to engage you, our diaspora, within growth and development of Barbados. And so this evening, we are looking forward eagerly to hearing her, sharing, and hearing you ask questions so that you can get an understanding of the richness of initiatives which we want to be able to share with you as our Barbadian people abroad. God bless you. God bless Barbados on this momentous occasion as we stand on the edge of another independence, on the edge of becoming a republic.
Thank you very much, Minister, and very, very special welcome extended to all of you joining us wherever you are in the global diaspora community as we continue this very special gathering. The Honorable Mia Amor Motley, leader of the Barbados Labour Party, has been Prime Minister of Barbados since 2018. She is the eighth person to hold that position and the first woman to do so. She's distinguished herself as a long-serving parliamentarian and cabinet minister, and her role extends to representing the interests of the Caribbean community, where her voice has been strident in representing our interests in the international community. Prime Minister Motley is now famous for engaging the Barbadian audiences at home and abroad. And so this is one such opportunity she's taken, not just to speak to you, but to respond to questions directly from members of the global diaspora community about the future of Barbados. We're pleased to welcome Prime Minister Motley.
Thank you very much, Julian, and I want to welcome you and everyone else to Barbados because even though we are in the metaverse, we are still here in Barbados and we are here for the purpose of our people in Barbados. This has been a difficult and challenging year, but we are here and we are resilient because we have that stock. And I want tonight to be able to spend more time answering questions and delivering speeches. So I just simply want to say to the diplomatic community, our representatives in North America, in the United Kingdom, in Africa, that we are very grateful for your continued efforts on behalf of our country and in engaging with our citizens who may not be on our rock but who nevertheless are still related to and engaging with us on this rock. And to that extent, therefore, we felt that it was opportune as we prepare in the week of celebrations, as we go into the historic moment for the swearing-in of the first Barbadian president, as well as for our formal assumption as a parliamentary republic, bringing to an end 396 years of British monarchical rule, that we felt that it was important that we also reach out to you because you are still part and parcel of this community. I've said that for us it matters that the passion with which people believe their Belgians by birth, by descent, by marriage, by choice, matters to us because we recognize that we can't build out this country simply on the basis of those who happen to live here on this island 365 days of the year. There are many of you who are already engaged in activities here. There are many of you who support your families in Barbados. There are many of you who want to do more investment and more engagements with us. And to that extent, this evening is about facilitating that. With me, I have here Attila Aracort as well, the Minister of People Empowerment and Elderly Affairs, the Honorable Cynthia Ford, the Minister of Commerce and Energy and Small Business, the Honorable Kerry Simmons. Of course, you know the Honorable Attorney General and Minister of Legal Affairs, Dale Marshall, the Minister of Home Affairs and Information, the Honourable Wilfred Abrams, and Minister in the Ministry of Finance with me, and to be fair, carrying the load especially during COVID, Minister Ryan Strong. And with us as well, in the event that you have questions about the movement of people or goods, the Controller of Customs and also the Chief Immigration Officer. And the Controller of Customs, Mr. Owen Holder, Chief Immigration Officer, Mr. Wayne Marshall. So Julian, I think that it is appropriate for us to get into it. I want to thank Ambassador Lynch and Ambassador High Commissioner Clarke and High Commissioner Milton Innis, as well as Ambassador and High Commissioner Alex McDonald, who is in Nairobi. I'm not sure if Alex is with us at this hour. He may well be because it is probably early morning in Nairobi. But nevertheless, let us continue with the process and let us have as many questions as we can within the timeframe that we have. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister. You set the stage and I know that you and your colleague were anxious to respond to those questions. That's important in the time that we have. Let me assure everybody that we'll try to get as many of the questions that you pose in and you have a number of ways in which to do so. Certainly, some of you were posting questions via the Zoom connection, which is up right now. All of you following on YouTube and also on Facebook, you pose your questions. They'll come into a central point and I'll get those questions and be able to pose them to the panel. Prime Minister, though, I think that one of the things I would like you to respond to really, just set the scene in terms of the republican shift before we address any other questions that come along as far as that's concerned. I mean, you know, I'm sure that you can put it in a nutshell, the quick transition.
No, because we have a duty to be able to adjust to the world in which we live and we have a responsibility first and foremost to guarantee that Barbadians are confident and have a level of self-esteem such that we feel we can take on all of the problems but equally benefit from all of the opportunities that the world has to offer now. Regrettably, whether we like it or not, our citizens sometimes don't appreciate the extent to which we can be our own people if we have someone else who can literally, by reason of rules not known to us, be continued to be our head of state. We felt, therefore, that it was important that we create an opportunity for a Barbadian to be able to aspire to and to be elected as head of state, and that is exactly what we've done at this stage. In addition to this, we see this as a requisite platform for us to be able to bring about a new way of thinking. In addressing the Chamber of Commerce a couple of weeks ago, I maintained that they needed a new mental landscape from which to engage the world. And it's largely because we are facing a number of issues, as are other countries in the region, and whether it is the pandemic with which we are all consumed for obvious reasons or whether it is the climate crisis that continues to affect us. This year, Barbados suffered from ashfall, which was not specifically the climate crisis but related to the volcanic eruption in St. Vincent. We suffered then from a freak storm, which many people may be aware led to 46,000 lightning strikes in less than 90 minutes. And two weeks later, we had Hurricane Elsa, the first hurricane in 66 years. When you consider that the ashfall that we had is the worst since 1902 and the pandemic is the worst since 1919, then you begin to understand that if ever there was a time for Barbadians to seize their future and to have to do it with confidence and to recognize that the resilience which characterized previous generations has now to be able to characterize our actions. Now is the moment from which that confidence should lead to action that will hopefully lead to, one, increase prosperity, and, two, greater protection of those who cannot help themselves by circumstances beyond their control, be it physical, social, or otherwise.
Prime Minister, thank you very much. I'm going to go straight to the first question. And it comes out of Christchurch. There's an interest there. People reach out to the particular areas of government with ideas to improve outcome areas such as health, economy, and so on, but they're not able to receive follow-up. Therefore, they get discouraged, pleased, advised. And let me just put a related question. Please explain the purpose and importance of the National Transformation Initiative to the nation and to its citizens. So Christchurch interests first, if you can respond to that, but I suspect that is a general question that would go for the entire populace.
Respect to the National Transformation Initiative. We set it up because we believe that we are not going to become world-class without giving every Barbadian an opportunity to be able to be exposed to the skills and attitudes that are necessary for us to engage the world. It's ironic that on the 2nd of January, I think it was, 2020, we spoke to the country and talked about transforming Barbados into that world-class country within seven years. We said seven years because we understand it's going to take time because success is a habit. And therefore, the National Transformation Initiative is trying to provide the level of training and support services that are necessary to give people the skills and to remind them of the attitudes necessary if we are going to succeed in this world. So for example, the citizenship module has already been taken by quite a significant number of Barbadians. But ultimately, we want as many Barbadians, whether adults or children, to be exposed to it so that they begin to understand what matters and what causes people to give you a forward and what causes people to want to promote you. These things are absolutely critical. Similarly, we were lucky that the National Transformation Initiative has been able to partner with Coursera, which has provided for us over 15,000 courses. And these courses will reflect all types of areas of activity. But of course, one of the major areas for us are things like tourism, financial literacy. Minister Simmons is here. Kerry can talk to you about the importance of financial literacy to us because we believe that that is the next natural step with a credit union movement that has over $2 billion in assets. How do we better utilize the funds that we have? Barbados has nine, over nine... Barbados has over $9 billion in savings within our economy. How can we better leverage that, particularly given the fact that most people are getting necks into nothing with respect to the interest rates for their savings? So there are so many different aspects of economic and social activity that the National Transformation Initiative will continue to work with. It's separate from the Training Board, which tends to be more hands-on and dealing with those types of skills that require more sustained physical activity. Whereas the National Transformation Initiative is a facilitator, but also a developer of training materials that relate to attitudes and not just skill sets.
All right, a couple of other questions are coming in. By the way, that question, those two questions posed came up via the YouTube audience. Are we going to go now to some of the Zoom questions that are coming in? PM, although I agree with you on the republic, has any other country gone republic without bringing it back to the people in the form of a referendum? I know you've had that question before, but I suspect this is an opportunity to reinforce the responses you gave earlier.
I can't tell you off the top of my head. I don't think Trinidad went to a referendum, or Guyana, or Dominica. But let me also be very clear. We have been discussing this matter. In fact, Ryan Strong is here. And I'm going to ask Ryan to speak in a second. Because his experience with this reinforces why this is absolutely critical. Every single government in this country since 1998 has included the transition into republic in their manifesto. But more importantly, every single government since then has recognized that the election of a Barbadian head of state is as basic as ABC. And to that extent, there is really nothing to ask with respect to that. Where the consultation comes is in the Constitution. In other words, what are the set of rules that will govern our behavior as the fundamental law of the country? And we have already given the assurance from the very beginning, might I add, that we will do that, not just as a constitutional document with 150 or 200 pages and you have two months to read it and decide, but chapter by chapter by chapter, so that you begin to have every month a different focus on the kinds of activities, whether it is the fundamental rights and freedoms, whether it is the structure of cabinet and the executive authority, whether it is a public service, whether it is parliament, whether it is the boundaries commission, whether it is a new integrity commission that we hope to put in the Constitution. These are the things that will fundamentally be the subject of deep engagement with the Barbadian public and diaspora. But I want to go further, and perhaps I've not said this and should have said this a long ago. It is not passing strange, or perhaps it is passing strange, that this became an issue, not as a national concept so much, but in the midst of the confusion with those who wanted to find something to talk about in the midst of the Democratic Labour Party leadership race. And I don't say so lightly, because I recognize that to the extent a lot of the commentators and a lot of the arguments were related to persons who had additional exposure within the political field. I put it as gingerly and as gently as that. So that, look, you have to lead. And we are seeking simply to do that which is as basic as ABC. A Barbadian head of state should be a Barbadian. A Barbadian head of state is one who should be a person who has been either born here or assumed citizenship here and who understands intrinsically the nation. And the symbolism of being able to aspire to be head of state is so powerful that we cannot deny it. And I wouldn't know how the head of state, the president of the USA would be a man from Brazil. I wouldn't know how the president of France would be a person coming from Nigeria. And therefore, if we accept that, then we begin to understand that the notion that our president-elect, who will be sworn in on Tuesday night, who is born in the parish of St. Philip, St. Farlap, is the person who will bring immense pride to every Barbadian boy and girl. Let me share a little story with you. Last night, I went walking around in Golden Square Freedom Park, which we will inaugurate on Saturday. And a young girl, who is the head girl of St. Ambrose, with her aunt, came watching the parade rehearse on the outside and then wanted to speak to me inside. And she was so taken as a young Barbadian girl with all that we are about to do, but in particular about the fact that we are about to swear in our first president. That if I had any doubts about the wisdom and the right correctness of what we are doing, they would have evaporated instantly when I understood the emotion and the sense of excitement that this is given to our young people. So that, and I said to her, I said, you know, in 60 or 70 years' time, I hope you remember this moment. Because we certainly probably will not be here. As much as I would like to say I'll be here in 60 years' time, I somehow don't believe it. But I hope you remember this moment and that you can capture it for those Barbadians who are yet unborn. And who are unborn. And let us be able to say to them, look, there was a moment in time where we had the confidence to say that after 396 years of British monarchical rule, that we have the full confidence and capacity to be our guardians and the keepers of our faith, the charters of our destiny. And I trust and pray that Barbadians will appreciate the immense strength of that confidence.
Prime Minister, you promised to have ministers. Strong Wayne here, so let's see if he will contribute at this point.
Thanks very much, Prime Minister. Good evening to everybody. Julian, I'll be very brief. I was at university in 1998 when the Ford Commission was, when the report was laid. And I recall as a younger Barbadian, the excitement certainly with respect to the idea of transitioning to republic. And I think, if I recall correctly, 2000 was the year that we were, the signal, given that we were coming into a new millennia, into the 21st century, to be able to chart this path forward for Barbados. But the reality is that 21 years later, we have taken this decision. So I want to say to all Barbadians, including those in the diaspora, we have to ensure that Barbados continues, Barbados continues to develop and do right by its people, but we have to make decisions in a timely manner. And the reality is that with 23 years since the delay of that report in parliament, it is time for us to get our act together. I don't think this should take anybody by surprise. And I say to the young people today, I would be disappointed if we are going the route of doing another commission, missing the moment, and then it taking another 20 years to be able to take a decision which is the right one. And I support it fully in that the process by which now we do and come up with a new constitution, which gives every Barbadian the opportunity to have an input, which was not the case when we became independent early in 1966. So I think as we go to this, to a new status, but equally as we've been debating over the last two days, how do we relate to each other in the context of the charter? That the opportunity now to craft a new constitution for Barbados, I encourage and invite all Barbadians to participate. And I say that we must continue to make decisions in a timely manner so as to ensure that Barbados can continue to thrive. Thank you.
Minister Strong, don't go away. Stay right there because here's a question just for you. Somebody said, I've heard of the Barbados dollar and along with pegged to the US. Is that true? What are the likely repercussions if that ever happened?
Julian, the, that is not, that is not true. And the reality is that there are lots of these questions coming that are, that relate to, that are genuine questions. And I think we have indicated that the relations that we have will continue. If there is to be any substantive matter that requires engagement, then obviously we will take those issues to the public. But on these very basic things which all Barbadians are familiar with, there's no intention for the government of Barbados to move away from the US dollar. And therefore, I say that that person is not true.
Thank you very much, Minister. Let me engage the immigration head now. This question, once Barbados becomes a republic, will visitors from this country from the UK require a visa for entry?
Okay. I'm going to ex.
Sir, yes, you're on now.
I'm going to exercise some ministerial privilege and answer that one and take that pressure off the Chief Immigration Officer.
Thank you, Minister Abrams.
Nothing is going to change. When we become a republic, we're going to replace the queen as our head of state with a Barbadian as our head of state. That is the only change we're looking at at the moment. Beijans are not going to require a visa to go anywhere. They don't require a visa to go to. No. I don't think we're changing the visa requirements for English people to come here. Our visa, our requirement of a visa is based on the strength of our passport. So Barbadians travel many places based on the strength of our passport, and that is not going to change. So, no, for those who have the fears that the tourists coming from the UK are not going to require a visa to come to Barbados, no, that is not the case. For those who have the fears that we will not require a visa to go to England, unless something has happened since yesterday, no, that is also not the case. So the only substantive change that is going to happen on the 30th of November is that a Barbadian now becomes our head of state. Travel-wise, immigration-wise, citizenship-wise, those things remain the same.
And I want to indulge you.
One thing, the AG reminded me that the passport will actually change because there's a reference in the existing passport to the governor general. So as persons renew their passport, any passport issued after 30th of November is going to have on the inside page a reference to president as opposed to the governor general. So, but, and all the other passports will remain valid. So that's really an administrative functional thing and nothing that anybody needs to be concerned about because it doesn't affect any person in the use of their passport or in the strength of their passport.
I think this next question is for you, Minister Abrams, as well, from David and Mrs. Sager in Canada, which he would like posed. What is the government's strategy to tackle serious violent crime in Barbados?
I think exercising ministerial privilege once again, and I pass that one over to the AG, who's the better person to answer that.
Yes. Good evening, Julian. Good evening to everyone in the diaspora. You know, we've adopted a multi-pronged approach since becoming the government on tackling violent crime. And we've already begun to see some significant progress being made in that area. We have to reflect on the fact that when we came to government in 2018, there was a huge backlog of criminal cases that had clogged up the judicial system. We had over 1,000 indictable matters which were awaiting trial, but only two high court judges to do those trials. That would amount to about 500 cases for each high court judge. In a relatively short space of time, we've increased the size of the criminal bench by adding a further three high court judges. So we now have five high court judges in the criminal division, whose only job on a day-to-day basis is to try to work on the battle of criminal cases. Now, you may not immediately see that as a, as a strategy, but let me say that it is really a common sense thing that when individuals commit crimes, violent crimes especially, and the judicial system does not act and respond swiftly, then there's really no deterrent for those other individuals who may, who may want to get involved in that kind of activity. And, you know, they say justice has to be swift and firm. And we are at the point now where we are seeing relatively recent incidents of violent crime being dealt with. When people think of violent crime, they also think in particular of firearm crimes. And we put a strategy in place which would have seen bail being refused to individuals who were charged with firearm crimes. Unfortunately, that has hit a snag in our high court. It is being appealed. And then there are the other softer measures that really are adjunct to law enforcement. We recognize that there were a lot of societal influences that needed to be addressed. We had and still have across our island, community centers that are in need of repair. We have, we inherited a situation where a lot of the social programs that addressed our young people had fallen into disuse. So much of what we've also been doing is allied to law enforcement, but not strictly speaking, part of the law enforcement effort. We've tried to identify 600 vulnerable families. One of the obvious things I would imagine is that vulnerable families are those that, that because of the circumstances, not of their own making, whether it's law, education, standard, poverty, it allows the young people in those families to be more easily drawn into a criminal environment. And therefore, a lot of what we're doing is not just law enforcement, but also other matters to try to lift up the standard of those vulnerable families in Barbados to steer our vulnerable young people away from violent crime. So our approach is multifaceted and the work continues. We've never expected that we'd be able to turn around violent crime overnight. But I'm confidently saying that we've begun to see some significant inroads having been made.
Thank you, Attorney General. Here's a question. Why has the cost declared customs and high percentages in goods not been revised for at least a few months? Many in the diaspora can send plenty to fill hamper is for the needy, but the cost associated to get them to family members is not feasible, particularly with the high cost of goods also in the UK. Am I right in expecting that I get a response from the customs leadership?
Julian, I will answer that question. Now, we have been working certainly with various organizations to be able to help bring some comfort to Barbadians at home because of the pandemic. Now, we have lost $600 million in revenue throughout this particular process. And we have been working to get the economy jump-started by being able to relax some of the restrictions. Now, what we have also been faced with is an increase in expenditure in relation to responding to COVID. And as the Prime Minister articulated earlier, we've had to respond to the ashfall as well as to rehousing persons as well. So we have been looking at ways to see how we could address, not just what the duties may be, but we also have to recognize that globally, the cost of items have increased, the cost of raw materials have increased, the cost of shipping equally has increased. And therefore, we have been looking to see how we can adjust on government side, notwithstanding the requirement to do more spending to provide social support. But we have been monitoring it in order to ensure that we can deliver that. It is not an easy exercise because as we have been trying to manage the public health side of the pandemic, which requires more resources every time there are surges with respect to responding to that, it does put a strain certainly on government's revenue in order to continue to provide the range of services which we have been able to do throughout this crisis. So it is a balancing act. And we have indeed been giving cash transfers, which has been done through the welfare department and equally through the household mitigation unit in the Prime Minister's office to be able to help support families. And therefore, any donations that come through the various charities, we've been, we've been working with them to be able to help provide some relief to persons. But in the situation that we are in, we are constantly monitoring to ensure that we do not necessarily compromise our ability to provide a range of services. But we have been reviewing it and will continue to do so.
Here's another question. This one coming from Doreen King. As founder of a Barbadian NGO focused on youth development, who resides in the US, she says, I've met particularly difficult challenges regarding system processes for diaspora engagement. Now, let's get specific to her question. She says he's interested in ascertaining the specific machinery and responsible party for disseminating procured scholarship information throughout schools. Additionally, watch the machinery to get waivers on fees for donated supplies in persons of need. Who will take that?
I've always said to Barbadians that I've always said to, to Barbadians that this process has to be orderly and therefore, the extent to which donations are being accepted by a specific institution, then that institution ought to be aware of the, of the donation. So for example, if you are, if someone is in the diaspora, is desirous of donating to the geriatric hospital, then you should make contact with the geriatric hospital so that they are aware as to what it is being donated, so that they can determine whether it is something that, that they would, that they wish to have done so that we could facilitate the waivers administratively on receipt. And therefore, whether it's the donation to a medical institution or educational institution, once the institution is aware of the donation and they are prepared to accept it, then administratively within the Ministry of Finance, we can issue those waivers to the customs department in order to allow for a smooth process. But the entity ought to be aware that the donations are, exist before we can go ahead and organize the waivers.
Thank you, sir. Can the Prime Minister explain what is the level of our foreign reserves on the eve of being a republic? What will the government do to ensure that our foreign reserve levels are maintained to ensure stability of our currency?
Julian, the Prime Minister wants to see the foreign reserves come down because foreign reserves coming down from the 40 weeks that they are at now will mean that there's serious economic activity going on. I don't think we've ever had higher reserves than we currently have. And, and our reserves as of this morning, Ryan, were what, 2.7 billion roughly? And that is hovering around 39, 40 weeks. So that the truth is that we have been able to support economic activity without worrying because of the health of our reserves. And we are now at a stage where we believe that a number of the key projects that we are looking at are likely to start. We've seen clearing of ground. Of course, COVID really, really hit us hard and put a pause on a number of projects that we expected to start from since last year. The bottom line is that based on what I'm seeing coming across town planning, based on what I'm seeing in terms of people clearing grounds, I expect that we are in a position to see heightened economic activity and by extension, jobs that will make a major difference to, to, to the lives of Barbadians who have been suffering from COVID in the course of the last, the last 21, 22 months. With respect to the reserves, I think that I'll simply say that I expect that the rating agencies will put out a report, Ryan, within the next 24 hours. And like most things, I'll wait for them to speak because sometimes it's better for people to have an independent judgment than a judgment from us because as we know, self-praise is no praise.
Okay, thank you very much, Prime Minister. Here's another question. Barbados offers little incentive to invest and be more involved in the island, says one questioner. This is a disincentive due to extremely high cost of everything and that everything is in bold. Lack of service, which is in many ways an unknown concept. How can Barbados do better is the question.
Julian, would you be so good as to restate that question again, please?
Right. It says, the person suggests that there is very little incentive to invest in Barbados and this, this incentivized, incentivized, sorry, due to extremely high cost of everything. And I said, everything is in bold. Lack of service, I suspect the top customer service here, which in many ways is an unknown concept. How can Barbados do better?
I don't know if I can agree with you that that is the experience that, that we have. I think quite the contrary. Julian, this government has, this government has done, this government has done unprecedented work in trying to accelerate the, the, the ease of doing business in Barbados. Everything now that previously had to be done the old-fashioned way, getting into a motor car, going from point A to point B, using paper and pen in order to, to, to make applications and receive approvals and so on, is now online. We've done it with some things which are as elementary as getting passports right through to getting certificates of character, et cetera, et cetera. You, you name it, virtually everything has been placed online. Well, yes, and of course, the corporate registry on Friday will, will put an end to all of that bad experience in the past. So I think that the investment climate as impacted by business facilitation has obviously had to have been improved since then. Above and beyond that, we've gone to areas which even during the COVID experience, no one would have anticipated seeing this type of, of work taking place. So that, for example, if you look at the makeup and the construct of the Barbados economy, a lot of not only small and micro businesses, but larger businesses as well, the hotel sector and so on, is very closely linked to the entertainment industry. And in turn, therefore, fundamentals like accessing liquor licenses, which have been a major problem in Barbados for years, connected again to the, to the whole experience in the, in the entertainment industry has been the access of, or difficulty in accessing licenses for major events. Whether those events were sporting events, whether there were cultural events, you name it. We have, we have gone through all of that, that, that work that was necessary to bring all of those activities now online. The licensing process for any form of liquor and so on has now been completely revised. And, and again, it has to have had a positive effect on the investment climate. So that if the second part of the question is connected to the first, then I can only say to you that the first part is not something that I can agree with. On the second limb, which is the cost of, of living, I will accept that the cost of living in Barbados is high. But I also need to say to you that we have done, in fact, as recently as Monday, Prime Minister would have chaired a, a lengthy meeting with our private sector, going through all aspects of the inputs to costing in Barbados because it is something that we have said we would work with the, the private sector on with a view to trying to wrestle some of the challenges which might be domestic to the ground. But let us not fool ourselves. The cost of living across the world has skyrocketed. The post-COVID environment is extremely more expensive than it was prior to COVID. And that is true for virtually every commodity. I'm sitting here across from the, the, the leader of customs comptroller. And the comptroller will tell you, a container coming out of Asia, an empty container, which in 2019 was, let us say, sourced at $3,000. In 2021 today, it's costing us over $20,000 United States dollars. That is before you put anything into it. There, there has been a substantial surge in prices. We see it in the United States, we, quite frankly, in my sector, in the energy sector. Major issues, natural gas partners that we had who would help give us certainty of supply, tell us frankly that the demand out of China, the demand out of Europe is so high and the prices they're prepared to pay are so much higher that, boy, you know, we could try to hold on and give you a little something, but we could do far better elsewhere. So we don't know how much longer we can do that. And that's just the reality of the world we are living in.
Kerry, if I, sorry, true. If I may add to that, this morning, as President of UNTAD, I met with the Secretary General of UNTAD. And they have some studies that have been done which show, for example, that out of global inflation, 1.5 percentage points out of global inflation is now as a result of increased transport and freight costs, as Kerry just pointed out. But we go further. If we go to the question of imports, the value of imports has increased 11% globally. Now, let's look at what it is for small island developing states with respect to both. With respect to inflation, while 1.5% globally for transport, for small island developing states, 7.5%, five times, five times what it is globally. And secondly, with respect to the value of imports, while it has increased 11% globally, small island developing states, 22%. And when you add to that, there is also the very real thing which Kerry has not perhaps fully completed, which is that will you get it? Because it's not just about costs. And our orders invariably are so small that they are tempted to just say, we'll deal with somebody else. So I think we have to begin to realize and to appreciate the, the difficulties. The meeting to which Kerry referred to on Monday is the second meeting we've had, and the first meeting being the 29th of October. And that comes after an interministerial group working with a social partnership that puts some options to us. We're meeting back on the 1st of December again. But we understand that this is going to not be an easy thing to wrestle wrong, wrestle to the ground. And we have said, as he has correctly pointed out, there is a difference between imported inflation and those things that are within our cost domestic, within our capacity domestically to control. We're trying to do that in a way that makes sense. We're looking at a number of options. But let us appreciate, as he said, the world is in a very, very, very uncertain place. And, and we have been talking to the country about it because, as I said yesterday, nobody owes us a living. And unless we get on top of this and get on top of these issues with, with speed, we're going to find that we will become victims beyond our capacity to recover. We believe that the best time to be able to address many of these issues, the best time to be able to build out, the best time to be able to transform is in fact, in the middle of this uncertainty. As difficult and as uncomfortable as it may seem for some. Because when it finishes, it means that we have the increased capacity to be able to benefit once the world starts to level back. I want to welcome Minister of Foreign Affairs and Foreign Trade Jerome Walcott. Senator Jerome Walcott, he would have been in parliament, finishing up our business in parliament. And therefore, that's why he wasn't with us at the beginning. But thank you and welcome Senator Walcott.
Thank you. There's another question here, which I suspect the Attorney General will want to respond to. Barbados becoming a republic puts it, as far as this writer is concerned, outside of the Privy Council. Will Barbados reinstate capital punishment for serious crimes such as violent homicide? That's the question.
Let me say first of all, that the, the issue of the Privy Council has, has been settled long for us. And all of our appeals, our final court of appeal, in fact, is the Caribbean Court of Justice. And that has been the case since, I think, 2005. So, and in fact, Barbados was one of the few Caribbean states, CARICOM states, that signed on to the appellate jurisdiction of, of the Caribbean Court of Justice. Our, our larger brothers and sisters, Trinidad and Jamaica, they retained Privy Council. But Barbados has long ago shed that vestigial element of the, of the Commonwealth. In relation to, I think the question was capital punishment. Well, capital punishment is only available for two kinds of offenses, treason and intentional homicide. And the Caribbean Court of Justice has weighed in mightily on the matter of, of, of the mandatory death penalty which Barbados had up until 2018. The, the jurisprudence coming out of the Caribbean Court of Justice, and rightly so, has been that the matter of the mandatory death penalty is in fact unconstitutional. So that what we have had to do is to change our law to remove the mandatory nature of the death penalty while retaining the death penalty itself. So Barbados still has a death penalty, but it is not a mandatory death penalty that so many people in an older generation would have in mind where upon being convicted for murder, the, the judge would say, you shall be taken from this place and, and hung by the neck until dead. That is no longer the status quo. Every single case requires the judge hearing the matter to make a decision as to what kind of penalty would be imposed. And that includes the question of capital punishment. So to reiterate, we have long gotten rid of the Privy Council as our final court of appeal. And frankly, I see the removal of, of the queen as the head of state as being an important element of, of that decision that was taken now so many years ago. And secondly, we still have a death penalty, but it is not a mandatory death penalty. It requires the judge in every case to make a decision using his discretion.
Thank you, sir. Here's another one. This time, the question being posed is whether Barbadians will be able to, to vote by mail-in ballot utilizing, for instance, the embassies and consulates abroad. Is that under consideration? That's, that really is the question.
No, no, not at this stage, Julian. Not at this stage.
Right. Does the government have any plans to introduce legislation regarding cryptocurrencies? How soon will average Barbadian be able to benefit from the crypto space?
Thanks, Julian. Since coming to office, we have created between the central bank and the Financial Services Commission a sandbox, a sandbox regime to be able to, one, monitor and understand how these technologies before, the products, sorry, being offered on, on these technologies before they're able to be accessible to the public. Let me state though that certainly it is our intention to ensure that as part of Barbados' capacity to move forward globally, that we will be looking at the necessary legislative framework to be able to, to put these in, into place. But let me just indicate that when we passed the new central bank act, we did within the context of, 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 given the, within the context of the central bank, to be able to, as the monetary authority in the country, the ability obviously to be able to monitor whether, from a digital currency perspective, any of these technologies to be able to come on stream. But they're going forward, though, there will be specific legislation. But it is, as we said, the regulators are still working through with respect to the products that are on offer. But we are confident that once we can settle that framework, that we can start to build out Barbados as a digital hub, certainly within the context of the region. And we hope to be able to do that in the shortest possible time.
A reminder for those of you following our special global town hall meeting that you can pose your questions on the Zoom chat and also on the YouTube and Facebook channels which are carrying this show. This question here, are there plans to ensure that financial institutions also make it easier to business in Barbados? Tasks such as opening and closing bank accounts that have to be done in person is ridiculous in the age of social distancing, etc. So let me have an answer to that particular question.
Yes, Julian, as you, as you are aware, between the banks, the credit unions, as well as the other part three agencies in the countries that take deposits specifically, we have since coming to office, put in place a new regime with respect to not just digital payments, but with respect to how the financial architecture in the country obviously is, is, is conducted. Just bear in mind though, that given the nature of our responsibility with respect to anti-money laundering, as well as the, the financial institutions do have a fiduciary responsibility to be able to ensure that these transactions can be completed on a KYC basis. And as that infrastructure is rolled out across the financial institutions, it certainly will be easy for Barbadians, not just here, but those abroad to be able to, to transact that, some of those activities. I know that as part of the rollout of our new digital ID for the country, that we will be in a position to leverage that technology in order to help make some of these transactions easier to execute. But we're in the, in the process of rolling, of, of rolling that out. And the banks have been, sorry, the banks as well as the other financial institutions have been working to ensure then that we have the appropriate processes in order for persons to be able to do that. But the reality is that persons have to engage the technology that is being rolled up by the financial institutions in order to help make it easier to do business in the country.
Another question regarding a regional airline.
Julian.
Sorry, Prime Minister, go ahead.
Thanks. I'd like Kerry to just talk a little bit about the collateral registry, please. Yes, thank you, Prime Minister. And that, that obviously dovetails quite nicely with the, the whole question of making it easier to do business. What we are doing with respect to the concept of the collateral registry is to try to create a new sphere of opportunity for access to credit in Barbados. Being very frank with you, Julian, one of the problems that have plagued us throughout time is a lot of our businesses, not only the micro and small, but the medium sized as well, are, are very stressed and stifled when it comes to accessing credit. And I think the whole world knows that if you don't get credit, then you tend to, to, to suffer as a business. Traditionally, we've been about credit being about bricks and mortar. You go, you have a mortgage and that mortgage is attached to real estate, attached to property, et cetera, et cetera. You go, you have a mortgage, and that mortgage is attached to real estate, attached to property, et cetera, et cetera. Increasingly, we have a number of people who are desirous and are actually also able to use other assets. If you think about it, we have farmers who have tracts of land at their disposal, but but they do not own the land. They're renting, but they have the crops in the field. They have people who have significant amounts of accounts receivable from their business, but they do not own the building that the business is in. We have persons who, for example, may have a number of fishing boats. In my constituency, that is a reality. But they, those vessels are not at present treated as though they are assets that are bankable when we go to the traditional financial houses. So what we are trying to do is to create a new sphere of opportunity where non-traditional assets can be used for the purposes of leveraging credit. And the necessary securities will be put in place. We've done some research on how it works in Jamaica. We just had a delegation come back from Jamaica. We are benefiting from a lot of assistance from the University of the West Indies Justice Improvement Project. And quite frankly, I am expecting to be in a position to go to the Prime Minister and the rest of my colleagues here in Cabinet in a couple of weeks with a a proposal that will be, I think, very, very attractive and pleasing to them. And then we we can move forward.
Thank you very much, sir. The next question revolves around regional airline. A person suggesting Red Jet was promising was shot down due to politics, as far as they are concerned. What's being done in that regard?
Well, since we've come out of the market and we've indicated that it was unsustainable for us, obviously, especially after COVID with respect to Liat, there are a number of private sector airlines and public sector still. You still have Caribbean Airways, Cal. There's Inter-Caribbean, which is operating from the Northern Caribbean and has discussed coming to Barbados for a southern hub. There is Fly Always out of Suriname and Guyana that's doing and about to do serious work coming out of the Southern Caribbean. There's Air Ante, and there's a whole host of other airlines. SVG Air out of Saint Vincent, they're probably close to twenty private airlines. The problem is, is that in the COVID environment, no airline found it easy to operate. And what we're going to have to do now is to see as we start to move into this next phase, where we are treating the COVID as a marathon and not just as a sprint, what is going to happen in terms of the movement of people. I'm happy to report that the Ministry of International Transport has said to us with respect to the kind of traffic that we are likely to face at our airport, that by the end of December this year, we should have about eighty-six percent of the capacity that we had in December twenty nineteen flying in and out of our airport. I suspect that once that begins to happen, there will be a more credible platform upon which regional airlines will be able to operate. Because more often than not, people don't only come to Barbados as a final destination, but they still use Barbados as a hub. And quite frankly, with us being able to push as quickly as we have with extra-regional travel, I suspect that there will be a return to some greater level of hub-and-spoke activity than you might have seen in December twenty nineteen when we were at that height.
Two questions from one from one person. The one first part is, what is the procedure for selling tenantry land? And the other one is, when someone already owns their home, why does it take so long to get their deeds?
Those are complex questions. The procedure for selling tenantry land is no different for the procedure for selling any other kind of land. But I I suspect that the person asking the question is probably, or I hope they're asking it from the point of view of wanting to buy the tenantry land that they're on. And I'll get to that in a minute. But in relation to selling tenantry land, if if a person has already bought tenantry land, the only restriction on selling tenantry land is that you cannot sell it within five years unless you get the permission of the court. And that is simply because we didn't want to create an environment where you could buy land at ten cents a square foot and then immediately flip it for vast profits. In relation to purchasing tenantry land, I I couldn't say that there is a particular difficulty. But I will say that in some instances, the challenges revolve around the cost of of putting things in place to actually conduct the sale. So for example, the cost of surveys. We've had a situation, certainly in my constituency, where we have Joseph a tenantry, where the government has actually had to take on the responsibility of doing, of 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 surveying those lands so that the land can be sold. But the interesting thing is this, the cost of the survey is actually more than the selling price of the land itself. So the cost of the average survey would be at least a thousand dollars. But by the time you sell the individual the land for ten cents a square foot, the only money coming in will be two hundred and fifty dollars. So you're immediately going to be selling at a tremendous loss. So those are the kinds of things that have to be factored in when you are looking at at tenantry land. In relation to non-plantation tenantries, I will say that the government continues an initiative that was started when we were last in government. And that is that where the the owner of the tenantry land is insisting on a price over in ex in excess of two dollars and fifty cents a square foot, that the government will pay the two dollars, it will pay everything over the two thousand and fifty cents a square foot. So in fact, we actually subsidize up to seven dollars and fifty cents. So we actually subsidize the the cost of an individual who is okay, seven fifty US, it's up to fifteen Barbados dollars. So that if if a a non-plantation tenantry, maybe a tenantry in St. Michael, and the owner wants twelve, fifteen Barbados dollars a square foot, the tenant would only pay two thousand and fifty cents, and the government will will pay the rest. Generally speaking, in relation to individuals getting deeds, you know, the the, a lot of of what challenges the conveyancing system is the fact that we don't have registered title all across Barbados. In a system of registered title, the entire conveyancing process can be finished very quickly. Where we don't have registered title, the searches of searches against the land for encumbrances and so on takes a significantly longer period of time. And then, of course, the conveyancing is non-standard. I would like to say, though, that the Prime Minister has had significant discussions with myself and the Minister of Housing and has mandated that in the shortest possible time, we look to see how we can completely simplify, hopefully through digital media, the whole question of conveyancing. So conveyancing, and then, of course, mortgages are are added to that so as to be able to reduce the transaction cost and to speed up the time. And those are two of the challenges that that we are constantly facing, that the transaction cost is too high. And then, of course, added to that, the longer period of time to get the transaction processed.
Thank you, sir. Question, will the government consider citizenship by investment or other entrepreneurship residence investment programs?
Certainly no citizenship by investment, but we will. Barbados has had a program really of investment immigration status. The chief immigration officer is here. And he can speak to the fact that under the legislation passed in the early nineteen seventies by Mr. Barrow, there was always a provision that if you invested money, that that was one of the major criterion to be used in considering immigrant status. I think it is fair to say that nobody now really talks about immigrant status, and people more talk about residency. And the new draft bill for immigration, which Minister Abrams is working on with the chief immigration officer, will continue to look at investment as one of the key things that we look at with respect to persons who want to settle here. And I say so against the backdrop that it's not only the investment of funds, but it's also skills. In fact, prior to this program starting, we spoke about the point system, which has to be part and parcel of the characteristics of the new legislation that will come. And why do we have to go there? I want to be very clear. When we became the government, we established a national population commission for the first time in this country's history. That commission reported just about eighteen months ago, twenty months ago. We've not done much with it because of COVID. But we have been having the discussions, and I've been speaking about it very regularly. Because that commission report shows that Barbados has not replaced its population since nineteen eighty. But perhaps worse than that, that it is projected that within thirteen years that we are likely to have a smaller population, a smaller workforce, sorry, than we currently have now. Now, those things are serious. And and this country therefore has to take remedial action to be able to close that gap. If not, what is going to be put at risk is the capacity for us to earn enough in order to sustain economic growth, but also to keep a stable revenue framework for government. And thirdly, to be able to ensure that the pensions for those persons who have already worked and contributed are guaranteed because there are enough people working within the system to be able to ensure that those people can get their pensions. So this is going to be one of the major topics that we go forward next year on. It is as serious a problem for us as the climate crisis. Because quite frankly, without solving it, we then are incapable of stabilizing our economic situation. And by extension, then, that puts pressure on our social network and framework.
This question, after November thirtieth, what will be our relationship with England and the rest of the Commonwealth?
I I I'm happy to report that we are still a member of the Commonwealth, Julian. I'm happy to report that just before coming into this meeting, I had a meeting with the British High Commissioner and the UK Trade Commissioner and the Prime Minister of the United Kingdom's Special Trader Envoy, who are in Barbados today engaging on improved trade. Barbados signed a United Kingdom Caric Forum Economic Partnership Agreement. We expect to be able to build on that. We expect to be able to deepen opportunities for trade. The United Kingdom remains one of the major countries from which tourists come to Barbados, almost forty percent. And let us be clear, look, children leave adults and still become the children and still are the children of of the parents when they leave the home. It doesn't change the relationship. And I'm not suggesting otherwise, but the reality is that Britain left the European Union. It's called Brexit. And therefore, I had cause to reflect with the High Commissioner this evening that both of us are enjoying new constitutional status. And 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 to that extent, we both know what it is to walk in these new new arena. And and therefore, we look forward to working together and walking in partnership in order to build out opportunities for our citizens.
Talking about moving forward, here's a question that's aligned with that. What does the Barbados government need from the diaspora for Barbados to move forward?
I think we need the continued engagement of our citizens, both in terms of investment and in terms of skills. I've asked Minister Walcott and Minister Husbands to work with our representatives to make sure that we have a database. Without a database, we don't have information that is capable of manipulation. And I continue to say, if you have not registered with the various embassies or high commissions or consulates, then we ask you to do so. Very so often, we will say, who in the diaspora can do A, B, C? Or who in the diaspora can provide D, E, F? Without your participation, it's going to become difficult, and we have to rely on word of mouth. One of the key things about the immigration bill also is that it lengthens the relationship as of right, as as we would have said earlier. So persons who are third, it's what, great-grandchildren of 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 Barbadian will have as of right the opportunity under the new bill. And if you go beyond that, then you'll get a certain amount of points in the system that will give you a competitive chance of being able to to participate. And and why, as I said, we have not replaced our population. And based on that report, Barbados is eighty to a hundred thousand people less than we ought to be. And it means, therefore, those who are here are having to work harder and harder and harder to sustain that which existed or that which is being given to citizens under the time of Tom Adams in nineteen eighty. Now, that can't be right in the third decade of the twenty-first century. And that's what we are working to be able to correct so that those governments who come after, hopefully, will have an easier time in terms of having sufficient people producing goods and services to be able to maintain and build on our quality of life and to be able to engage the world on terms that are reflective of global excellence, but that are equally reflected of being rooted in Barbadian roots and Barbadian tradition. And we would far more prefer to do that with Barbadian descendants. So that for those who also have persons who are the grandparents or great-grandparents or whatever, come home, and and there are opportunities here to help build out. We believe you can engage the world in the digital and creative economy from here. We are putting a major thrust out in life sciences as we go forward. Renewable energy, Barbados has agreed, as Kerry will tell you, that we will by twenty thirty literally generate the majority of our electricity from renewable energy as opposed to fossil fuels. And we will also ensure, hopefully by that time too, that our transport sector is generated by non-fossil fuel capacity in order for us to be able to go. We recognize that they're not only limited to photovoltaic, but wind energy offshore, we're looking at that. We're looking also at hydrogen, because at the end of the day, Barbados is a home base port. We anticipate that within airlines and cruise ships, et cetera, that they're going to have to find a palatable, non-fossil fuel fuel in order to be able to power itself. And we can't wait until it happens to be in the game. So Barbadians who have skills in these areas of the new economy can come home, can engage the world from here. That's why the Charter and Article Five talks about engaging the world. So we believe that those opportunities are there, and we want to encourage you. Come on home, come on home. And and for those of you who have doubts, talk to your family, talk to others. And and let's be real, transitioning is not easy for anybody. And and therefore, there may be a few hiccups here and there. But at the end of the day, we're going to try to make it as easy for you as possible. And we want you to recognize, however, that that commitment for the long term is about building relationships. There'll always be somebody who will tell you, well, I didn't see this, or I went through this. But for the most part, the country is wanting and welcoming you, whether full-time or part-time in this virtual world, to be able to join us. Minister Walcott can perhaps talk about the Metaverse and the launching of the diplomatic initiative, which I think he scored a global first on. And we should therefore give him that opportunity to do so.
Good evening, thank you, PM. And just to say, I'm not going to go into much detail at this point in time. The Metaverse is, we've heard the comments that we've seen over the, tonight indeed, we've heard about blockchain technology, we've heard about sandbox regulatory framework. And these are the new digital ideas that are being utilized. The Metaverse Embassy is just an extension of that. It's allowing us to take it to a new level, something that is Facebook and Google are speaking about, virtual reality, and taking the concept of embassy into that virtual reality space. It in, somewhere, I'll say initially that initially, we're going to be using it in terms of marketing Barbados. You could enter this virtual reality, and you could see aspects of Barbados. Matters like the the points of interest will be displayed there. You can get information as relates to visas, application, et cetera. And we hope that as it develops, that it can be utilized by Barbadian tradesmen, by Barbadian artists, by Barbadian cultural people, we can use it for investment. And there's a whole slew of opportunities potentially available to Barbados through this. It has opened a lot of questions. We've had a lot of countries expressing interest and trying to find out more about this. And in due course, we're preparing an FAQ, which will be available online for Barbadians in the diaspora to have access and to perhaps hear more about it. I should say that The Economist this week has a special on the Metaverse and that we should not scoff at it and the importance of looking at this at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minister. Here is a question related to COVID nineteen. Can you kindly address if unvaccinated people are welcome to Barbados as visitors or as returning residents if vaccination is contraindicated medically?
Minister Walcott was talking to me when you spoke.
Sorry, sorry, you didn't hear, all right. I'm just, let me repeat that. I said, there's a question related to COVID nineteen. And this person says, can you kindly address if unvaccinated persons are welcome to Barbados as a visitor or as a returning resident if vaccination is contraindicated medically?
You don't have a ban against anybody. It just is a question of what kind of regime you're subject to if you're vaccinated or unvaccinated. Unvaccinated persons still come to Barbados. But Minister Walcott will tell you, and he's acting for Minister Bostick now, that there's a different regime for them as compared to persons who are vaccinated. So it is risk-based, but all persons are welcome to Barbados, whether vaccinated. So it is risk-based, but all persons are welcome to Barbados whether vaccinated or unvaccinated.
All right, so there we are then. Let me go back to, the questions are coming up on our Zoom. The next question here is, please address allegations that the port has been sold to Chinese entity and the airport leased to China for thirty years.
Stips, a long strips, a short strips, a flat strips, a big strips. No.
That's a no, but this next question must be a yes. What is the machine to invite Prime Minister Motley to be a guest speaker at the virtual Harvard Kennedy School event?
Just send the invitation and once I have the availability, we'll do it for you. Thank you so much.
Is it likely that restrictions lifted through the Christmas season?
We have already had some improvement in restrictions. We had moved the curfew back from nine PM to midnight. And our numbers have not been as much as they were before, but we are watching carefully. Barbados is still very much managing this on a risk-based assessment platform. And Minister, I think today your positivity rate was about twelve percent. Yesterday, it spiked up a little bit over the four or five days, but the three or four days before yesterday, it was also down around fourteen percent. So what are you going to say? Once Barbadians continue to follow the protocols, once we can encourage as many people to vaccinate, as I said, we have not introduced mandatory vaccinations, but we have been very, very strong in wanting to encourage Barbadians. We are fortunate that sixty-seven percent of the people who are eligible to be vaccinated have in fact taken at least one shot. And we expect therefore that within three weeks predominantly, because most of them are taking Pfizer now, I believe, they will have both shots. And what that means therefore, is that while vaccinated persons in small numbers can still get it and there's a percentage that will have breakthrough COVID, the majority of the pressure that might otherwise be there on the hospital, Harrison's point in this particular case, or the majority of risk with respect to persons dying has been significantly reduced because of the level of the vaccination rate. And I really want to thank Barbadians for this because the truth is that before Delta really started to run havoc, we had a good base of vaccinations already therefore. And it meant that the kind of pressure that others have seen on their medical systems hasn't necessarily been replicated in Barbados to the same extent because of the high level of vaccination that we have. Does that mean we're happy with sixty-seven percent of the eligible population? No, we'd like to see more. We're currently awaiting the Ministry of Health being able to tell us what they will do with the five to eleven. Well, it's really five to twelve or under twelve, five to under twelve. We know that it has been approved in the United States of America, but the Ministry of Health is reviewing it. Similarly, we are hoping that we can add to the mix of vaccines when Cuba becomes available because a lot of Barbadians have said that they would prefer to wait for the Cuban vaccine. We've tried to impress on them that any vaccine that is available now is a good vaccine and that waiting on anything in the midst of COVID doesn't make sense because what you don't want to do, particularly if you're unvaccinated, is to play COVID roulette. You don't know if you will be that person who will suddenly decline with their oxygen sats or have multi-organ failure or any of the other things that cause serious problems. And even for those who don't pass away, the real problem with COVID is long COVID. Minister Walcott, I don't know if you want to add to any of those things?
All right, next question then. What is the status of same-sex civil unions and when can all Belgians expect to be able to form a union with the person they love?
At the moment, the legislation was drafted, but we haven't carried it to parliament. I think you are seeing in the midst of the, in the midst of the country now, some of the discussions. We did pass legislation for the prohibition of discrimination on the basis of same-sex. We do have a framework for it in the welcome stamp, for those who come on the welcome stamp. But the draft bill will be the subject of further consultation. And that is with respect to partnerships. We've been very clear to say that we're not addressing marriage at this stage, gay marriage. That is a matter for religious institutions, we believe. But we believe that there ought to be no basis for prohibition, for discrimination, sorry, against any Barbadian for any reason. And to that extent, the bill is there and will be the subject of discussion with others. I don't know if you daily want to add to it?
No? Okay. Different subject now. Do you think that a macro policy is needed to transform Barbados' labor market at this time?
I think that the whole world is going through serious issues with respect to the labor market. The Financial Times has been running stories recently about the future of work. And why? You look in the United States of America, there's a shortage of persons available for truck driving and hospitality services. You look in the United Kingdom, it's the same thing. Something is going on in the world now and we're still very much still suffering from the consequences of the pandemic. I have no doubt that once this pandemic starts to settle, the dust starts to settle in the pandemic because I really believe that COVID will be endemic, as the doctors have advised, that people are going to become accustomed to a new reality. And it is too early to see where that is going to settle. There will probably have to be a serious review of our labor market. The National Transformation Initiative, as I told you, is one of the key things along with the work being done by the Ministry of Labor and the Ministry of Education and Technical and vocational training in terms of preparing people for the new skills, the recognition that where we have shortages, that is where the new immigration bill will come in to assist us and for the transfer of skills. We talk about attracting entities whose business ecosystem can uplift ours in the same way that Intel, when it was here forty, what, forty years ago, was able to do. So that it's a little too early, I think, for that kind of assessment. But I have no doubt that we're going to have to have a comprehensive review of our labor market and what we have to do in order to be able to advance and make it more effective and efficient in the context of post-pandemic reality.
One quick question here for young, referring to employment among young people. Has there been any consideration to offer students the opportunity to study in critical fields such as medicine, teaching, agriculture, et cetera, with grants from the government in exchange for what would be a minimum, they say, of five years of service to the island upon graduation?
Let's begin. The first thing this government did was to reintroduce the policy of paying for our students to attend University of the West Indies and taking off the table the charging of fees for post-secondary education in Barbados. In addition to that, we have national development scholarships and there are other scholarships from which the country benefits. Ministry of Foreign Affairs has done good work with other countries in being able to access scholarships, et cetera. So that we start from that premise. Having said that, we are in the business of knowledge and creativity as a country. And to that extent therefore, as anything that allows us to increase the percentage of persons who have access to the skills, and notice I'm not saying degrees alone because you can have a lot of degrees but very little skills and vice versa. So we need to be able to get it right. But anything that pushes the capacity of Barbadians to be able to be more effective in being able to access jobs or to be able to establish enterprises that sells services and skills that are perhaps non-traditional, we are going to support. What is the constraint? Our capacity to pay. So that we will continue to be able to support that. And where there is expanded opportunity and we can afford it, we will obviously always take it. In the interim, our foreign policy and our engagement with other countries is sometimes on an exchange basis. Barbados was a place, for example, where under the Tom Adams administration, students came from Namibia and studied at the Barbados Community College and the other students from the Caribbean that have come here. So we know what it is to offer and we know what it is to receive. And beyond our commitments to the University of the West Indies and other domestic institutions, we would want to see an expansion. I suspect that we will be working on some interesting news potentially with a partnership with the Hospitality Institute in Palmieri, the Gene and Norma Holder Hospitality Institute. Because for example, we are in the business of talking to Guyana to see how we can help them be able to significantly expand the training available to Guyanese as they start to open a lot of new hotels given the boom that they're experiencing with respect to the increased activity in the oil and gas sector. So short answer, we are doing a lot. But yes, we would like to do more to be able to expand opportunities in the educational sector.
Prime Minister, we're going to wrap it here, but I'm going to invite you to have the final word, so to speak, unless you want to have one of the colleagues there make a final statement on anything that they consider maybe missed in this exercise.
I just asked anyone, if Cynthia, you haven't spoken at all, would you like to say anything before we wrap up quickly? Sorry?
Thank you very much. Blessing good evening to all of you. I would just want to say that we in the People Empowerment and Elder Affairs Ministry, we are working really hard at this critical time, this juncture in our history. We have never had it like this before in many, many decades. And our team is working extremely hard with the resources that government has afforded us as well as with the synergies coming through from various other entities, other groups within the communities, the business sector and so on, to help to cushion the challenges of the folk in those areas, especially the most vulnerable people. The ministry constitutes the National Disabilities Unit, the National Assistance Board, the Gender Affairs Department, where we have a section where the battered women, they are looked after. It's unfortunate, but in every society, we get it. But we are working as assiduously as we can to be able to help to cushion what is happening with our women. And indeed, we know we do have battered men as well. And therefore, the opportunity is there for us. So our social workers are working flat out to be able to work towards some social assistance for those persons who are suffering. As you are aware, the freak storm that came the week before, the tropical storm Elsa, has really devastated many homes. We're up in more than six hundred in one way, house stops up in a couple hundred as well. And some of our people are still in accommodation, private accommodation. So that the Rural Development Commission and the Ministry of Housing and so those synergies are in place to be able to help to cushion some of the challenges and to be able to upgrade those houses, rebuild those houses. We're working assiduously to have that happen because we understand living, persons living in positions where they have been displaced, that is creating quite some problems. Our welfare department is on board. The welfare department is now stretched capacity, but the funding has been upgraded more than three times what we would have been receiving before to ensure that those persons who are suffering, the most vulnerable of them, that they will get the opportunity to still have food to eat, clothing to wear, shelter over their heads. I want to thank the landlords and others who had given a little rebate, also the utility companies, but time has run on longer than we had planned with COVID. And therefore, there are persons who are flocking to the welfare department to be able to keep their heads above water and to feed their families. And we will continue to work with them to make sure that every Barbadian gets the opportunity to at least to sleep comfortably and to eat well, to be able to go forward. Another component that we have that is really extreme, of extreme concern now is the fact that we all know our seniors are living longer. Barbados is the second in the world as far as we are aware. Where our seniors are living, we enjoy the company of our centenarians. Almost every two months, there's another centenarian. But that also comes with a lot of attendant challenges and the light that many of those seniors either suffer from dementias, the Alzheimer's, some of them are in impoverished situations. And we are encouraging families, not only here but those in the diaspora, to be able to send in to help to uplift those persons, ensure that they get meals and medical care and all that because it is something, it is a phenomenal thing. And a lot of it is as a result of the free health care that they would have been enjoying for many, many decades, as well as the education. But we need to continue to work together to be able to make sure that our seniors are well cared for. And of course, we are, we are working with Pajo. We've got the legislation looking at the aspects of making sure that they are safe from abuse and that whatever other needs that they have, that we can work towards it. And finally, I would want to say that I am really very proud to know that we are, we now have, we are the stepping stone of having legislation ready for the reform, looking at the amalgamation of the social services. We would have started since nineteen ninety-nine to be able to come forward with proposals for the amalgamation or the reformation of those social services. A long time has passed. We have not been able to do it as successfully. But now that we have done all of the investigations to look at the most vulnerable lists and prepare them, they clearly indicate that we must have those social services properly amalgamated to service the needs of all Barbadians because at present, they're more operating in silos and have been for many, many years. And we want it to be a one-stop location so that when individuals come, challenges with children, challenges with the senior citizens, challenges with the disabled and so on, that that one-stop location will be able to look after our direct persons because we intend that the social justice must reach all and that everything must be equitable because each person in Barbados matters. And we want to continue to work as best as we can to be able to make the difference. I heard earlier of persons making queries about sending in foodstuffs and all that. Yes, we're not begging, but we know that relatives loves to, love to help, excuse me, love to help others. And I believe that at this juncture in what has happened with the ashfall and the hurricane and all of the areas that there are needs, that it would be great for us to be able to get assistance from our brothers and sisters in the diaspora to be able to help to cushion them. Some have come on board already. They have brought the oximeters. They have been able to send other pieces of equipment and so on that will be able to help them in this time, to be able to make sure that their health care is well looked after. But we will continue to work as assiduously as we can with the other synergies in government to ensure that our people remain healthy, that they live long and that their care is of the best quality so that at the end of it all, we can speak about one nation, one people under one government that continues to look after the needs and the interests of everybody. And I want to thank you very much for engaging us this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Minister Ford. Prime Minister, you get the final word?
Thank you. My word is simply to say to Barbadians, wherever you are, thank you for engaging with us. I hope we've been able to answer some of your questions. I hope we've been able to make it possible for you to want to be here. Those of you who can't be here physically, we live now in virtual world, please join in with us on Saturday evening, afternoon, we go to Golden Square Freedom Park. And for those of you who have never been, I invite you to go because hopefully you'll find your name on the wall that reflects all of us who have helped to build this country. On Sunday morning, we have the Independence Church service. On Sunday afternoon, we have a flotilla coming into Carlisle Bay of over seventy-five vessels, I believe. On Monday night will be the installation and the swearing-in of the president of Barbados and we look forward to that. And on Tuesday morning will be the national honors, the confirmant of the national honors on Independence morning itself. So I hope tomorrow evening as well, I should say, I'm going to be engaging with a bunch of young Barbadians who have entered the Future Barbados Challenge. And it would be interesting for a number of you in the diaspora to talk with us afterwards to see if there are any synergies with the seven challenges that we will have, that we have for them, sorry, and that we will be speaking about tomorrow evening. So for those of you who are not yet booking your flights, remember that you can come home even after Independence and we may see some of you at Christmas and if not at Christmas, in the new year. But all we have to say simply is stay safe because that's the most important thing. Without life, we will have nothing. And may God bless you and bless this nation of ours and your families. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Prime Minister. Thank you also to your cabinet colleagues and the other leading government officials in the audience fielding questions from the diaspora community. A special thank you to the Barbados Mission in Washington DC who coordinated this global diaspora event on behalf- on behalf of the overseas missions in North America, Europe, and Africa. All that's left for me to say is happy independence, and we look forward to being a republic. I'm Julian Rogers. Good evening.